For the planning commission and what they'll have while he can do our play. Roll call please.
Chair.
Here.
Bix, Commissioner Beck, Commissioner Chester, Commissioner Hickinson, Commissioner Snodgrass.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Thank you.
I was on note for the chair that measures that are not here identified their absence. One of them is celebrating the anniversary. The one has seen their kid today and the other one is at, so they did have his sentences.
Okay, would they have any public comment?
No public comments are not on the agenda.
Okay, so we're going to send it in and we need commission minutes of third. Can we take a look at them?
I'll mix up the minutes as.
Okay, we have a second. With that, all over.
Hi.
Hi.
You got four eyes, asses. So we'll get along then to our first on the edge of the land use case review for fourteen tall and twenty, twenty-four point number foot eliminated sign.
Thank you Honorable Chairman Alga. Quick item number four, a land use compliance review for a monument sign is to advertise a new car quality which was previously approved at number seventeen one three at four one four two road. So I've got one before you on the screen which shows you the proposed monument sign red there at the bottom. So it's just outside corner of the driver painting county line road. And would be conditioned to ensure site triangles are aimed along that frontage. And then hearing of the proposed which is the name of the facility cares car wash. As you can see is similar to the archival kind of character that previously approved car wash and that only under construction right now. Again, the square function in the project is twenty-four point nine one squared is a decorative base which are pursuant to our municipal and yeah.
Fellas, to the point, thank you very much. Okay, we have applicant.
Up here today.
Okay, so disclosure for the ex parte, do we have our members who?
This isn't a public, so I don't think required for this item.
Yeah, if anyone has been ex parte but a motion, a public hearing, so no public comment.
Okay, alright. That. We have no public comment. Okay, along here in the end, um, so I guess we'll probably carry. Now we have none. So we'll just close the hearing and move to the commission. Commissioners, do we have a may sort? Okay, we have a motion to approve and the second with that, those in favor.
Aye.
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 The ayes, motion passed. Next item would be inner general place number twenty dash one three.
Alright, I'll begin. So is case number number twenty-one dot team. It is entitlement to five point one nine acre that involves construction. Um, construction storage and as equipment repair yard includes additional covered storage area, uh, future truck repair building and future and truck anticium along. You got with applicant is Hal action. On the project itself is designated by the general plan as service commercial for the majority of the small portion that is designated at tenem or multi residential land use district. This is within a few different individual parcels that come that five point one nine acre site. This is located within this industrial corridor. A little bit of history on the site, the site has been used directly by Hal Hayes construction, which started on the thousand two and then before that was forestry. Uh, the site improvements had been previously into case number zero zero oh eighteen, uh, planning. Um, since then, the site expanded a little bit further increases that are within the RM tenum district. Um, location, there's also been several unpermitted that were constructed in that location. And so the south in order to address those unpermitted construct and then certainly to address the law in terms of Hal Hayes construction on the site has submitted a few different entitlements project. So the first one, a minor general plan amendment, which is can complete the zoning of the site to the service commercial. So it's only district versus having that small remnant of family residence. There's a conditionally used permit, a multi-phase commercial project, one full phase to address the unpermitted structure that are located on the site moves are legitimized and have building for them. Phase two is construct the repair building, equipment and car wash, um, to support their ongoing use of. And then the final phase is for two thousand square foot, which includes a six thousand square foot office and a thousand square foot, um, and this is to help their business location in Ucaipa. There's also a variance for the back end landscape coverage, which I'll get in a moment. So as I mentioned, itself does include kind of the first element is that minor amendment is for this triangle site. Um, that is the length in itself. Hal Hayes owns these different parts. And so this land itself doesn't necessarily any street frontage that through within their their commercial, um, part. And so this kind of land lot nature and integration really serve ability for any multifamily to build apartment construction site. Um, and they are proposing a general plan amendment to that single land within their properties. Um, and then as well, um, as part of the term, so we do have this flat runs along the eastern side and ecological transition. So being kind of west of that is the social and then east of a continuation of the residential with exception here that has that, um, further up the street. This is that conditionally used permit application. As I mentioned, the first failure to address these unpermitted structures directed in this RM way back here. Um, itself ties this new source already storage yard areas of the land use for the site really doesn't just more or less in some of the span heard. I'm really addressing some of these structures, um, through the building permit process as part of this. Maybe the situation structures of how they currently look, they do meet the building code requirements. And so, um, the applicant is aware that any models they need to make will be part of that process, but by and large, they want to try as much as they can this site. And as I mentioned, additional phases that are proposed on which is expand the capability. So as a vehicle repairs in this building here and then the car wash canopy back. They do have equipment stored in this area here and some of that kind of modified around and cases that they have so that they this additional use. Three additional parking lot area, southern portion of the, or the western portion. And then, um, the is phase three is this building here all on Dunlap Boulevard, which with the, the office for their use are planning to relocate options from their from Riverside to this side. And then they also, um, the Hayes, um, family, um, has a number of vintage traps had and maintained and poured. And so they want to be able to display private events, um, where you can come check it out. And so many, um, it just I think of, of the fan for this type of equipment. Um, it seemed like it'd be, um, um, interesting, kind of ties into both their street, but kind of the Dunlap and Dodor and kind of the history of, of serving, um, kind of construct another related activity. And as I mentioned, the last entitlements is variance as part of this tri- tri- area. Um, some of the, the structure about, um, seven and a half of the rear property line of the city's development code are transitions to other uses that are not does require fifty yard setback. Uh, this really is to address compatibility concerns that would arise commercial site to real. And in this case, because it's adjoining the floodway, it's really backing up to other uses or, or people that is just to the floodway itself. And so that based on the triangle duration they have submitted, um, ends in the gender report. Um, as site has been historically used for, um, this type of commercial, um, on it then, um, as part of the property news permit and number three landscaping along the site. Part of the, um, new option parking lot, there'll be addition being added to the site. It does fall below the ten percent required as part of the, the development though they submit variance for their. Then as part of the site review, um, a service commercial land use district, uh, the first meet all the development codes with exception of that landscape and the building setback for the rear. Otherwise, the parking standard, building setbacks and lot and coverage, uh, use requirements are consistent with development. Um, as part of the, it was noticed to surrounding property, no comments were received on that, on that project notice, nor were any comments for the MND that was prepared for the California environmental quality. That was circulated from May fifth, twenty twenty-three and May twenty-fifth, um, twenty twenty. Do you want to know as part of the analysis, we did have technical studies including air quality, gas and energy analysis, as well as a noise report, ordered the findings in the MND. And as part of the processing, it just does have a minor general plan amendment. It does require, um, city council approval and tonight's action is a recommendation permission to the city council entire project, um, to memorial general plan amendment. And then it was facilitate the approval of the project with it. And so with that, um, staff determined approval, I do want to know, um, that I didn't catch on for it. This is a minor gentleman, not a major that was listed on the, or on the, the reasons. Um, this project just involves a minor change. Or a recommendation for happy answering and the, uh, the and their representatives are here as well answered questions.
Okay, one question, what difference between, what eating point between minor, um, you know.
It's kind of listed in our, in a few different spots where minor one is where it's making kind of small changes and other directional in the general plan. This is where you're really seeing a bit change up. If you have different goals and objectives in our plan and you're really diverging is considered a made up general plan amendment. So in this case, since you have side one and other that matches to the side that off not be a general plan amendment, it would just be a minor, minor mapping change.
Okay. Committing fees that they would have incurred for, uh, the non-code building that will all be processed.
Yeah, so they'll be subject to the building.
Retro.
Fees for all, uh, it would be be them submitting the plans to they get carried over to.
Yeah, it'll be as built on basis.
Some sort related to know, uh, there's a few different types that have been constructed. I think that'll be through building, looking at that and what kind of stretch. Some of it maybe some of them I think did my pre-engineered stress. So in that case, I will have a little bit more effort.
With that, the applicant or sentative like presentation?
The commissioners, thank you.
Have you here?
Oh, thank you. Um, just we wanted a agreement with all conditions as they got forth. As noted, unpermitted structure obviously go through the full plan check process and will be brought up should they need to be all be addressed at that. And of course, we're here to answer any, if you have any.
A request, uh, it's always been an area for yards and whatnot because of the concession, the exchange I feel for is to set an example in that area and start spend a little on the escaping in the front of the, the area.
Absolutely.
Lead in that area.
Absolutely. They, um, obviously they have kind of unique, um, escaping as it's, it's probably one of the properties are, um, as, um, shown with the some of that the company owners, um, so they do like a, obviously their old antique equipment, which is going to be part of new structure. You can see from some of the pictures, what some of the being includes is old, um, working. But that, that'll be extended. There's going to be some gate requirements. We'll work off on what's required escaping. And see from the plan have a full part will be going in. It'll look more.
Professional.
Yes, it needs to be right now. It's just a construction. There's not a paper or anything like that and, um, take. It'll have a curve thinking you're looking for.
Just see the rocks and the we, we could do better for after, you know? Thank you.
Okay. With that, do we have any public?
No public item.
Okay, so we'll close the hearing into the commissioners. Commissioners, what we have here?
Think, uh, the last is kind of is what it is. The RM ten operating ahead of it to money and would like to make an offer and do something with the general plan of a moot point. The, the side is just a bonus. So I think it's moving in the right direction.
I agree completely. I think it's good to move and forth.
I'd like to make motion to approve, uh, this project and all the records.
Okay, we have.
I'll second.
We have a session. Discussion, all those favors.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, those very.
Yep, so nation will be provided to us.
Okay, let's move to our next. Consider of a development case twenty-one dash one three.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Uh, before you, item number four, uh, case number twenty-one one three, a development code, uh, amending division, chapter seven of the developer replay relations requiring biennial renewal, commercial signage, one time sign registration with additional provision of the requirement for entitlement to be for free standings, which are reviewed with an, uh, nation that includes architectural and, uh, the opposite, the city of Ucaipa. Um, so going over this historic, uh, our government code calls at the biennial registration, which through assigned decal per the planning department. Um, but historically a biennial sign has not been either for staff or, uh, business owners with it. So that has historically been through a one-time signature with a fee that for a one registration. Um, and so the ordinance proposes to a requirement, uh, to be in line practices and to move that requirement for a registration as well as removing the for a decal, uh, replacing that with a one-time registration. So, uh, uh, only there's a some clear on the CR and when that would be required. Uh, the is ambiguous and per the letter of it would be something like what you just say to be reviewed. A land use can be for the sign as well, um, for a use permit with our review. But the revised ordinance or the proposed ordinance would allow all new freestanding signs, uh, reviewed in a single with another in that requires architectural, um, under the same submittal with the same application. Uh, so it's really just kind of a cleanup, well, as something to make it a little bit easier, um, new developing in. Is, uh, staff's recommended that the planning duct to public hearing and recommend council, uh, first reading by tongue ordinance number four oh one, finding the ordinance is environmental review pursuant to resources code fifteen oh six one B and, uh, fifteen three oh three and eleven. I guess I should add that also noticed in the news and, uh, received any comment.
Any fiscal impact as far as the?
Registry. Um, so as part of the city's user, we did modify the review or the sign registration and provide that staff says, um, historically dollars with a ten per square foot, kind of weird kind of had the review and then talking to foremothers and directors. I don't think ever done her. And so the user fee update to it to where it's the one-time review that cost of that. That has been addressed as part of the, the second, um, technically a potential redoubt or, uh, the fees for application. Um, so if someone architecture review, hopefully they would have to submit a fee for the land use compliance we had developers standing. Are you looking at the architecture mine at the same time they change? And so this I think of a way to streamline this and really make it more common search. Um, though that minor, um, impact all the staff process still address architecture reviews. And so in that regard, there really isn't anything beyond that.
Okay. Did the applicant want to make a presentation?
Um, Ben.
Yeah.
So I can do present, no, this is a cleanup. I think some stuff that we didn't felt like it was worthwhile to just sort it out, so.
Man, I'm a night here. This is, so we have no.
We do have a, um, I don't need comments, um, from.
Okay, well, comments, well, we'll close hearing and we can move to the. Commissioners, anyone have a?
I just have a couple. What's the, what is now the renewal? It's every two years, right?
That is not in the with the, so when we fee update and occasion for the staff cost not include, and so we did identify the council, um, after report that this would be, would be correct as a cleanup item.
Do you want, do you fee structure?
There I don't, uh, it's, uh, twenty-nine dollars for the. For two thousand two hundred and nine or ninety.
Rain.
That's alright, we're together.
And that's a one-time.
We're all on the same page. Okay, papers, yeah, I mean. Anyone else? Do we have a?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have any other discuss? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Four ayes. Okay, well, item number six, right?
Five.
Five. Okay, well, number five is a special unit for archival review, case number twenty-two one eight one.
Uh, thank you again, Alga. Today I have you item number twenty-one eight one, a special for the architectural review, seven foot tall and two thousand five hundred square foot uh, garage workshop that is to patch the existing on a residential property located at three eight eight Siceland Road. The, uh, Robert N. Rannings. Uh, the site is located on point two six acre located within S twenty M land use. Uh, it's a half a roughly single residential district. Personal vehicles and item, um, with a downhill sloping from the front to the rear of the site. The site is currently improved five thousand five hundred and eighty foot home. Um, this garage is two thousand and ten square feet, uh, and feet tall, actually taller than the home, but it on a pad that's, uh, located behind and in the home. Um, and then all army, uh, setbacks and is hundred feet from the. You can see that here it's a long flag, kind of puts far back there. These are design primary residents, their stick build was stuck, uh, with a twenty-seven cable roof, uh, accent cables along with, uh, modern style doors, uh, the frontier as well as the right and, uh, stuck. And vertical, uh, to primary residence. Applicant also has had some projecting roof elements, provides some further articulate. Um, it's kind of dreams, so he was pops on it. Public comments, this is where surrounding property owners and no response. Um, some photos of site that you can kind of imagine the, uh, garage going to look like. And so, uh, the station, the architectural design, the structure, not the special use things, um, categorical exemption and file in noticing. Um, applicant was on it tonight. He had a arrangement. If you have any questions, hopefully answer them.
Any question for staff? Okay, is the applicant wants to make a presentation?
Was not able to make it.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
No public comment. Move, close public hearing and move back. Commissioners, any thoughts here?
I think it's a beautiful, now move.
Okay.
The agenda.
Yeah, I think it's good to stick.
Okay, we have a second for the discussion. All those in favor, aye, aye, that's four ayes, asses. Okay, we got the numbers with case twenty-three dash two two to the general, general amendment to change land use.
Alright, thank you all well and planning commissioners. Case number twenty. One point fire site, um, at the corner of street in Ucaipa is currently as the city either center and formerly as the police fire station. Uh, and changing the land use district for national, um, to use general commerce district. This is the location of the sign showing the corner of in Ucaipa Boulevard and the former police station, intercenter, the parking, um, landscaping and overflow parking and this parking. Um, the site itself is currently dated as institutional. It does fall with different portions of two degrees. Uh, for a little bit of background, September of twenty twenty, the council did approve, uh, resolution one twenty-one dash which was declaring certain properties plus land. So the whole recognizes at the time that their center program was probably going to be modifying some forms and else. And so the continued use of that property for city, um, wouldn't be necessary. So after that, um, they'd receive a letter of, um, for purchasing the property. Right now the city is in a negotiating agreement. Um, property, um, really is part of this since, um, the city is not going to use the feature and whoever likely won't want it additional, but rather as commercial. The proposed general plan amendment reflect that new land use, um, as a note, the site itself with incubator center was being those kind of professional office, which is consistent or commercial land use. Um, ways it really is kind of just forming the site from what would have been instituted city-owned piece of property commercial for type structure. And then whoever by submit their own, you know, use permit or modify the site to reflect those. So that is tonight's act. Um, we're just trying to facilitate this so that whoever does buy is ready to go as a site for whatever the rules are. Uh, and, um, with that staff does approval, um, in that the project is a form environmental quality at fifteen oh six one three, the, well, that, um, there was development proposed with and then the south that the site has been and what would be a lot in our commercial are, are the same. With that, I'm having questions. Um, that is my presentation.
Okay.
Does the general commercial reflect like the certain corners in that?
It does. So the general is located across the street, street more places, catty corner on opposite side is the former, uh, poncha jiu-jitsu, our commercial properties to the south. So, um, like we're, uh, pizza shop, general commercials consistent going on around it. Um, really this was part of their area. That's why it was, it was reflected of that use that went on those.
So was this general and then zoned to, and now it's going back or it's been an industrial corner?
Or this I think is usual. The city for the San Bernardino, um, part in before that, oh, what apparently the surrounding use of commercial would be hard. And so city isn't into retain ownership by the future user as institutional.
Any other questions for staff? Did the applicant make a?
He is in supportive following city council traction.
We have any comments?
What comments received on this item?
We'll close the hearing and we go to my commissioner. Where we have any thoughts?
I will move approve this object and all actions.
Okay, we'll go to the second discussion.
I'll second.
Second, we didn't get it. Got a second now. So with that, the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So four and oh.
So I'll take that recommendation to as well.
Item seven, major, that's for increase in the attaching sign requirement. Case number twenty dash three.
Thank you, Honorable and planning. Today I bring number seven. Shouldn't we?
Does it want to have any explanation on this?
No.
You didn't talk about that.
I had a discussion and Matt Locke.
Fortunately.
For clarifying, I had some question.
Now that that's out of the way, before you, item number seven, uh, twenty-three dash three one, variance for the increased, uh, attaching sign requirement. Two signs, three hundred and square. Ability to travelers along freeway and to be in line into corporate standards applicant being La Quinta. Uh, the project is within the existing Ucaipa district, uh, previously case number eighteen dive out with including a gas station, a restaurant pad, also a deep basin. Uh, the primary visibility I ten freeway Glen Road, uh, with zoning within this commercial land use district, uh, floodway to the north. The ten features four, um, kind of alongside, uh, with only two. Um, uh, as a part of that La Quinta, there's the Arco convenience, uh, the La Quinta that is currently under and getting pretty close. A pad designed for your development of a restaurant and proposal is for the review of all mounted signs which told that three hundred and six square feet, one face road and one face I ten freeway. Proposed sign, one is a hundred square feet, one that is facing the way, uh, one along, uh, Oakland Road, which is two hundred and sixty. Uh, your sign is, is facing road and is kind of tucked by the Arco gas station. Um, and again with their corporate designs and includes lit channel lettering, um, as you can photo up there, sign is already controlled. It's not in case. Eager. As you can see here, there's a photo coming eastbound, the hill that is kind of in the, in the way and one that, that, and that's, that's growing. So let's the location, the proposed wall mines are located five hundred feet eastbound traffic on the I ten, one thousand feet away nearest off, uh, visibility and over five hundred feet from road, which is further by the gap. Uh, the larger helped to offset some of the geographical of that and in westbound and the. And the signs are also on the third, which further to the appearance side.
Signs are?
Yeah, so, um, if you blue lines that are, uh, they're coming from where, uh, will be. Um, just, just to go, signs will be on or, um, the existing development in the area. Uh, and much of Ukaypa, our story stretch with it, but sign, uh, would be kind of in skip with the three hundred, or story building, it's a little bit taller, bit of a larger building. Um, size and the scale will be a little bit more in line with benefit where a, a smaller building. So you can see here, these are site photos showing sign regarding the work site that's there. But the smaller one, uh, is the one that is facing the I-ten. And again, the larger one is the one in Glen Road. As a part of the processing, notices were sent to property owners within this radius and as were received and therefore recommendation that you approve variance, uh, variance findings and find that the project is exqua and direct staff to files of exemption. Uh, the applicant is here, if you guys have any questions, we also have, uh, available.
Thank you, would the applicant come forth?
Hello, my name is, uh, I am the project manager, the new construction of the hotel. Um, currently in Ukaypa, hope, hopefully in Ukaypa as I have a, a site, a home for myself to live. Um, excited to open the whole, uh, the, the size, size of a necessary environment to be able to see it. When you're driving down, the sign look all as it is, smaller, you'll see it. So this is the, uh, the corporate standard Wyndham Hotel Quinta and I think-
Thank you, I do. Any other?
I'm just curious if you have any on like custom rack with stand walk-ins during a digital age now? People who, they lost. And if pass are looking it up on their phone to get there, how much, uh, to major variant of the city to, to please start, uh, uh, to serve. But concession cost the cus case, which is you, data to position in that case?
I, I personally don't have that data. Um, we do have a hotel management company could provide that if you need it. Um, they do hotels and manage a hundred different for La Quinta. But my, I'm the construct manager and I have that, so.
I just think as a signs at antiquity for what nowadays, you know? Maybe that's personal experience, but I think anybody booking host on walking and off the, or driving.
There, there is quite a bit at that exit, as you know, out there. Sure. You're having a lot of courage and ability. Again, it's, it's a beautiful, I think, activity.
Okay. Sir?
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Did you give me that slip up?
Christine Moller, uh, Fonritz. I just say that, you know, no question is beautiful and everything, your variances are manuses. Also, that building was a freeway and exit, would you guys give him a bang? So you're setting a precedent when you're, your variant means that other people have the right to do this. And I think we're going to times, you drive Glen Road, you see no, you see no firing, you see kinds of things. When you start, we're not talking a few hundred square, three hundred square feet, three hundred fifty, whatever it is, is a lot. So, you know, just leave it where it is, work before. There's no major variance, person open for others, the last you wanna do is be known. There's rolling on the freeway court part of the freeway committee. And you that the first thing people want is those rolling hills, not-
Thank you.
Uh, no what comments were received?
Applicant like to rebuttal that, anything? No? With that, it's closed the public. And to the commissioner, um, I think winning a president to be as friendly is what I look at it, you know? And we were gonna just try. Think important and how you own or their color invisible be successful, I think will be better off. I'm all for giving a little bit bar ban to, to everybody, so.
Just a comment is already.
Actually, when it got, I think it was like recently, usually sites tend to be eager to get their stuff and go from them in third-party contract.
It's been at least or more, hasn't it?
Yeah.
The builder know about the side parameters before sign was installed?
We did not.
It's permit, yeah.
So permits are, are separate.
And they come after?
Typically processed by a, a company. And so, uh, it was actually like that we made them, the sign was overland.
Kind of some of the application, the usually do, uh, the sign itself doesn't really capture fairly the, the kind. So it's just the sign where it's verification of this. It isn't included as part of review package.
So something makes-
The issue-
Get the signage and at the same time texture.
So the, the challenge at the review or the design of the sign and intent, isn't something that commission has any power? Just it is, um, First Amendment type stuff. So it's not the consignment. The ability towards the, the time player is the review of it. And so add architecture review image, uh, review would be, okay, we're footage of this. And that really is the details, Plan Commission, um, any authority over.
Got any on the, on building or the sign since it's been installed?
I'm not of any. Some of the finding or identified for, um, about the size of the, the, the building, a three-story cell. Um, and so the signage tends, is kind of a feeling of that other component that's worth noting. Well, is that the project does have utility from four different streets. So there's front separate front, they're proposing two signs on all frontages. And so one of them be on that, on the, the main side of the building.
The code's not exist on the building, we're trying to retroly, a co- a corporate, um, building? The game plan right now?
Uh, is something that has frustration because we are not able to straight up, which is why-
To pull that down with signs that match our-
Transistors.
Uh, who are sizing codes in the city? Like, why did we set those for them to jump?
I, I don't know. The sign code is a separate, uh, the city need to, um, for a number of different, um, to be a future outreach to that. In terms of why this table for the, was something that wasn't, um, for the G district, um, prior to it. So I think it's been listed that way, um, for, um, I think in the old county, I'd have to drew my rub that. I seem to recall this is a carryover of the county for the signs.
I just know the corridor, the only sign sticks out is the quirky, um, in and outside. That's well, sticks out with, um, anything else is pretty muted and off, and, uh, yeah, I just don't want residents something that negligible. I denied it to, and they appeal, um. Would they have an appeal to appeal?
Yes, the applicant to city council.
I'm not this business losing money, but at the, if concessions, I'd like to go that says that what person's business is mine, phone says, walk it based on seeing, you know? Cause I don't want residents that's able to incorporate matter to them. Think we're in a digital, this point, you know, so.
So, so one other thing that I, um, the findings provided is most people that are staying out of towners have all, might use somewhere as a wayfinding.
If they're not, I'll agree, it's not gonna miss about it.
We made the article, we were gonna change the corporate, what, then incorporation of their colors and their, and they're like with them. I, I kind of with that, you know, but that's something.
Is it because of the proportion and how many three, four-story buildings in town? And that was the sign since into the building.
There's the intercom, um, structures is the only three-story, have some three-story family jet send into three, uh, senior care that's on load. And some have kind of, my signage on, this is the lone, um, project that is, is kind of hiding in this.
So this is a project in town for a three-story building. Uh, and even reservations, I'm driving down the, look for the sign to try hotel, so.
But it's already the large and then it's gonna be building with the largest sign corridor?
I don't know, there are some buildings with, um, pretty large, but, um, well, all that stuff, so the three-story name, that's kind of the uniqueation over some of those.
I'll move this written, prove the sign.
We have, do we have a second? Well, I'll make. Okay, we have a second, we have discussion. Yeah, all those, one, give me.
Chair Al?
Yes.
Beck?
No.
Snodgrass? Norbeck? Thank you.
Item face, um, majority. Skill if they move the sign for.
I just recommend, I'm not against it, I'm not a business, just if you're with them for the, the business and sign this and whatnot. And, uh, what do you want to fail the whole city? So that's here, just the pro would help me convince that it matters to you, not a variance to, to make that.
I guess detail, then prefer a motion to need that addition from for taking off, um, on the project. Given that, that motion was through.
Everybody's that.
Yeah. Instead of making them file, moving it to a later, they can come with the information for.
Well, if, so there's, one is that the project tonight, you have to appeal it to city council. Other all is motion to item, um, to, uh, to date certain order. And then that applying commission, so action to the project is tonight, um, you'll bring it back. Just on from maybe guys can make a more decision if that's the way this wants to go. It's not necessarily that you're opposed or favor, but just nation that may alternative that, um, that you just motion from done failed.
One, change it. Just move it. We're gonna change the motion to move it to a, the knee or when, so we need further limitations?
Hmm, do that, so do the motion well, that falls as well.
Okay. So we had a second.
Take a motion to con-
Okay, I'll make a second. So we have any other discussion? All those in favor? Carrying it, moving, say aye.
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 Okay, we have that. Three.
I'm a no, I'm a no.
Okay, got three.
We will bring that back with the applicant, it just, uh, you'll move on the, the reason on that.
Okay, good. Moves us through it, right? I don't have. Hang on to that. Okay. We have case number twenty-zero-seven, um, or the code?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, Engineers. Today I have been item number eight, case three-dash-eight. Uh, ration of number four hundred and twenty, amending division four, type of development code to update rigs retaining two exsome units, jerk compliance with, including AB-two-one, three, four, five, and SB-seven, and the city's housing element. Among other things, ordinance will update departments, developments and height restrictions or accessory units. Further clarify previous, uh, the, uh, the city of Ukaypa. Little background project as a part of these six, uh, sixth housing element. An update to ordinance was ident clarify ADU with new dated laws, uh, with the housing element. Pretty streamlined process and then, and the development of ADU included amenities that were beneficial to those rest. Um, in addition, the mission recommended at their regular April nineteenth, three, that each process be developed allow for all garages, those tasked to be staff, rather than requiring planning goal of a use permit. Um, in line with updates, three, fourth, uh, February first of two, house for the separate convey ADUs specific circumstance, which require pretty hefty lift, uh, up including, uh, the ADU or priming unit was built or developed nonprofit. The ADU is qualified low air, uh, that is that satisfy requirements of section two point one, taxation code. Um, the property is held in recorded tendency common agreement with the following below. Um, as you can tell, is very specific, quite stringent, not, uh, something that we have had for, but in to be state law. Add those provision allow, uh, for, for the separate of ADUs under the circumstance. Okay, um, law updates SB eight ninety-seven, effective January twenty-twenty-three. Uh, increases which cities may, uh, for an ADU, being, uh, at least, um, sixty for a detached ADU. Um, same law as an existing single-family, uh, development. Um, ten feet for DDUs located on a less than a half mile of a main stop. That's ADUs on a lot with in or proposed multi-family dwelling or twenty-five feet base, uh, ADUs which are attached to a primers, uh, but no within the attached primers. Already meet these requirements, uh, just specified, uh, it's now that they're being specifically. Lastly, there was a law, AB-two-one, uh, which was also January first of twenty. Uh, the cleanup bill includes, um, additional permits for the processing, uh, and developments of an ADU, including action of timeline, uh, sixty-day review that were held to and requiring by complete notices, uh, full, uh, notices exactly what they're, uh, it's not multiple rounds that the city can use to kind of that test as well as the definition, definite permitting, uh, to include development in city. Uh, excuse me, within the city. Additional action that an ADU trigger a change in our occupancy, um, notification that construction cannot, there are fire sprinklers, family building. More process, building permit, uh, or that aren't directly in our order, urgently in our, uh, practices. Such cities could be bad actor for complying with these and so specifies they have to comply with certain. Uh, the one thing that, that addressed in the new, that's been provided, uh, a list of, 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 uh, development which not be enforced if food and two of eight feet, uh, and less than eight. Um, again, on those previous. Uh, it should be noted that may just do not, the city of Ukaypa has it already many of these standard and, uh, the most process clarifying. One thing a little bit more unique to the city of Ukaypa was identified an element, uh, was an attached garage and patio it did onto a twelve-hundred square foot to exceed that, uh, reviewed and administrative. Um, in compliance with housing element, before that streamlined review was proposed, um, and with a level review for an ADU that includes up to square feet of garage, uh, and up to two hundred square feet of patios. And it's encouraged, uh, tended to encourage ADU that provide for those bits and obvious for enhanced elevation porch additions. But a limit pa, uh, for or two hundred feet of additional, um, amenities would still trigger that SUP process. Uh, and the process that we have posed with that in line with the mission's recommendation at nineteenth meeting. Lastly, applications to our multi-families, uh, pursuant law, local agents, uh, are required allow the follow views on multi-families. So we have added additional city to our ADUs to show that we are science, uh, specifically. So it is foundation that the plan conduct a public hearing and that the city will approve by first, approve first rate only, driven by staff, number four hundred and six, and the ordinance from the environment, uh, from environments or going to public section one zero eight zero point one, SEQA guidelines, uh, three oh three.
Okay, any questions for this time?
On pivot our package, um, I, um, feel Ben, that there was an error paragraph. Says A for detached re-dwelling and then the next sentence, eight of up to twenty-five. Further on, it said no taller than the ADU, is that supposed to be the structure?
Yeah.
No taller, has that been correct? Right now it's lower than the ADU.
So that's just in the staff, that will be printed.
So that's, okay. Back below when you were talking about the multi-families, we're now two D to use, that's up, that's in the new law?
It's just specific on, on what we are allowed to have at least detached use on a qualified.
And it says into one, that is, so that's not of three, is that?
So the top to twenty percent of existing proposed, uh, unit, so if it's a hundred, you could have a fifty-five percent of that. It's a little difficult to convert it from no space, uh, and then the, no, A, B, other detached.
Yeah, and the multi standards we may be continued clean up by state legislature, given that, um, it's, um, we've been that and so we've changed much there for ours, but we did more objective designs as far as this, that is I HNA that will further as time in terms of clarifying state legislature.
Okay.
And just that, we, we were nineteenth meeting about how is the general bill applied to, um, commission any garages? And those are, that'll just you guys now instead of us?
As long as it stays under additional fear, uh, four hundred square, which is about a car garage, uh, fifty square feet of. So, uh, it allows a little of a, for those.
Streamline with us.
Yeah, people are kind of already maxed footage.
So we're kind of in the code, anything off our square feet of a traitor's review and build a hundred square foot ADU, okay, above a small ride, then if it's, so it's aligned that, but we're trying to show up and build, you know, twelve hundred square foot, three thousand square foot grow, now we're in.
Not based on living space roof?
Yeah.
So, uh, ADU has friction for a small garage that in.
Allow for the strut, uh, some attached to that, not require a more intensive review. So it says if you want garage, two to three ADU, that is something, so I'll make it easy to do it then harder.
Good, that's clear it up. We, what we do- We, where we do the comments?
And receive one public.
Okay, do the public comment?
Being Hanson one, three five one for Court Street, um, uh, concerning the basis of this, uh, two-foot structure. Basically bigger than homes, uh, I was one it might be to as a review by the commission for now. See how it goes, future, if you feel that the issues are okay, then leave our staff, I I'm a little concerned. Size go up to, something for you to consider.
Do you sir?
Footage is a best state legislation.
So the twelve hundred is per state law and we said kind of the threat within reasons, garage is a well, most of their success are for it. And then the pam and to the, uh, the planning commission reviewed, I think, a few ADU attached garage, so that was.
Size of the AD based on percentage of the existing, right, I mean, they they thousand square fixture and a two-foot ADU, correct?
Um, there are some that really in certain little bit cases where it is kind of like that. We've on earth flip it, the new unit that they the house, uh, almost that smaller view, so.
So relation based on the living?
Uh, they could build that, so there's people have done it, depends on what ones are, but our square foot is that app on the the ADU.
Would no, no matter the structure, like it's standalone rate.
Yeah, and usually it's so someone built a a large square foot ADU, seven hundred, they may do the the new house, different reasons will do that, so.
Would be good if, uh, and that, um, to just know what state mistake is a require a recommendation, uh, as you you said. The size that is what could be done now, the planning commission, whether requirement or did I just, I.
Okay, I wanted that comment, the EU itself, our square feet loud, middle by, so the plan have you on those type of. Two is they go beyond, it triggers CP and so law is on what, um, require review, so it establishes allow. Anything wants to do that is what is per view, because of structures, every process with my attention. Make this rather than through a separate process, couple of that are applicable, planning commission had the ADUs be shaving on garage, only consequence that it has. Okay, well, we went with a small, then worthwhile to make the administrative, that was the, um, course of the, um, planning and so. They framed it, we can certainly make that as course, but the planning know of deny the orange trophy, it'd only be a gym patio and so I'd have set kind of. For that, uh, for that kind of threat, certainly, building a, uh, garage for a square foot yet, nothing that falls with still trigger review at that time.
I I would do that, I have a ton of ADU, most comment that we get from neighbors, the construction is working a park, it's kind of helping that problem. Um, you know, a place to store, store their goals and I store papers.
And advise to dread you not just build a two-foot box because of the re- reviews, so one some incentive line, putting an amenity on their home and. Style, you know.
This was suggested at the link, because I'm approving, that was a two-foot building, haven't even do, it was because one car, a garage. Was it a seven hundred square patio cover or something?
It was a pretty small.
It was very small, but I wouldn't even look at a cover, I've been for a tad ADU, so that's, that was much of the stat.
I think technically would be looking at it on the new because it was hundred and fifty squatable. So that one tap, but any other one?
Yeah, most of them.
But I think a lot of. All two hundred and four feet of patio, you know, four hundred garage work and for.
Okay.
I'll move the agenda.
Clarify, so one hundred square feet of city trees with the mandated, right?
Uh, we don't have a.
Just trying to clarify the box.
Yeah, twelve hundred square feet, state statute have a a choice, so, if you know, we should probably close it as well.
So we're gonna co- uh, comment and with commissioners and we have a. Motion to move the second?
Second?
Second, so I'm more discuss, so I'm here to say aye.
Aye.
Four, four and oh. Okay, the next agenda.
Just minutes, uh, we have another in June, maybe the week, um, with, uh, July, and kind of stuff that's going on, a few projects lined up. Um, I get them cleared through fast, um, but we'll probably, um, taking a slight delay similar to council that has break as well, so.
The twenty, the twenty-eighth, is that?
Just the twenty.
Just the twenty eighth.
And that's.
It, okay, turn.